Good afternoon and welcome to the October 1st Board of Douglas County Commissioners Study Session. Today's study session is on our supportive housing community partnerships and roles like all of our study sessions. These are for informational purposes only. We don't take any action after these study sessions. If you would like to provide public comment, we do take public comment at our general business meeting, but we won't take general public comment at this work session. But please join us at 5:30 if you'd like to share your thoughts on this. And of course, you can always send us an email or give us a phone call. With that, I'll turn it over to Jill Joliker. And Jill, I think we have a number of guests here. If you'd like to introduce your guests, that'd be great.
Yeah. And we've got guests in the room, and we've got guests up at the table. I'm going to ask our guests at the table to introduce themselves before I get going. But we do have a lot of partners that work in this space, either in the room and some may be online as well. But I've got some key characters here today that before we dive into the presentation, I want to let them introduce themselves. And a reminder to get real close to the microphone, you may have to share one. Shelby, you want to start?
I guess I'm too short for this.
Just grab it.
All right. Hello, my name is Shelby Osborne, and I am a reentry case manager with Douglas County Sheriff's Office.
I'm Kristin Egan. I'm the Housing and Human Services Program Manager for Douglas County.
Hi, my name is Hannah Bolton. I am the Founder and Program Director at Cardinal Housing Network.
Hi, I'm Angie Bauer. I work for tenants to homeowners, and I'm the supportive housing rental manager.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen real quick. Give me just a second. Okay, so today's session is a follow-up to the conversations that we had during the budget deliberations around a handful of budget requests that were made related to supportive housing. There were budget requests that were for one-time capital improvements. There were budget requests for ongoing capital support, the supportive services and operations to support once that capital is completed. And distinguishing between the two was, at times, that was where we knew that we had an opportunity to do a little more information sharing and education, particularly, you know, just to refresh new commissioners and existing commissioners on how do we come to this work? And so I wanted to go back to something that, this is from 20, a slide from the presentation that the KU Center for Public Partnerships and Research put together when they did a needs assessment of our homelessness response system in 2022. This slide was from their, the final set of recommendations, and there's a written report that goes along with this. But this frames up the, how we've gotten into the position that we are in the community where, at any one time, we have 120 to 130 individuals that experience chronic homelessness in Douglas County. And this is what that cycle looks like. You see folks that go from, that they can be going from unsheltered to sheltered environment to, back to unsheltered, or into a shelter, into housing, lose their housing, and the cycle can repeat itself. And you can see here that, you know, this is the scenario that we're trying to, we're at, this is our aspirational scenario. We want to break that cycle of chronic homelessness, and we want to try to reduce the cycles of, not, even if it's not chronic homelessness, we want to decrease additional incidence of homelessness by making sure that we have the necessary supports that are wrapped around folks. So this is just a snapshot of what those supports look like. And it's anywhere from financial assistance to mental health, behavioral, physical health, employment supports, childcare access. This is just a sampling of what that can look like. So we knew that this was, this was, this was what we were trying to respond to when we put together A Place for Everyone. So one of the goal areas that's in the supportive housing section of A Place for Everyone is to make sure that we articulate a case, a supportive housing case management framework and best practices that get us to this aspirational scenario here. So that's, that's been where we have focused a lot of our work in the supportive housing space since we adopted A Place for Everyone. And what that's looked like has been, at times, looked really good, and sometimes it's really hard. And where the hard part is where we need to see greater coordination and collaboration and communication. And I think that's what the guests that are with us today are going to help tell that story. I'm going to shift to one more slide section that I have. So when I mentioned that we developed that supportive housing case management best practice goal area, I mentioned training. One of the things that we knew we needed to do as part of that was, we need to make sure that we're equipping our case managers, our care providers, our housing specialists, our peers, all the folks that are supporting folks in, whether they're property managers, our landlords, rental agents, or their case managers, or their reentry case managers, or their peers, all the different folks. We need to make sure that we're providing them with the most up-to-date training and information, and create a practice around that. So one of the things that we did right from the beginning was, we worked with the Corporation for Supportive Housing to come up with a two, two-day intensive trainings for, focused on the principles of effective supportive housing case management. I think everybody here, about everybody in this room, attended that, those two four-day sessions, those two-two-day sessions, four days total. It was a lot of work. And the slides that I'm going to show you are a subset of just one of the presentations that we have as part of that. But we have, take, I'll just say that, you know, the ongoing training, we've continued to do that, and we know that that's something that we have to maintain, and we have maintained. I want to, you know, call out, Carrie Nice with the Sheriff's Office has, they just finished up doing, I think their second or third motivational interviewing, a really intensive training that offers ongoing coaching that's available afterward, that the group at that Corporation for Supportive Housing training said that this is one of the foundational things that we need to make sure that we have as part of our culture of practice, and we need to make sure that we're introducing it and keeping folks fresh on it. We've done other trainings partnered with the City of Lawrence, Misty Bosch Hastings has curated some trainings around person-centered case management. And then we've done some training, more specialized trainings around collecting or hoarding, trying to get towards the more sensitive ways of describing that. But that's all been based on the feedback that we've gotten from the practitioners that are all engaged in this work. So the slides that I'm going to walk through real quickly that were in your packet are taking a deeper dive into how do we distinguish between the core roles of, in the supportive housing space? And that's the property management side and the supportive service side. So I'm going to try to go through these quickly and to make sure that we have plenty of time for questions. Okay. Woo. So who are the agencies that are involved? On the property housing management side, you've got the Housing Authority, you've got tenants to homeowners, you've got Cardinal Housing Network, Ninth Street Missionary Baptist Church. I might be forgetting some, and I apologize if I did, but I think I got most of them. Who? Shoot, artist helping the homeless, a really big one. My bad. Supportive services, you have Family Promise, reentry services, will of domestic violence, Burt Nash, Heartland Rad Act, the homeless response team. And again, I left out artists helping the homeless. They're ones that kind of live in both spaces, but all come together around a common goal, and that is keeping tenants housed. So if we look at, one of the things that the training that CSH did with us, and this is one of the things that they articulate to communities around the country as they train them on this, is it's really important to have, to really distinguish between the functions of the property management and the supportive services. There are some organizations that are able to do both under the umbrella of a single organization, but they're really specific in terms of how they distinguish those business operations and the management and the staff for it. One example I'll give, just, you know, in Wyandotte County, their Community Mental Health Center has a whole different supportive housing division. It's called Kim Wilson Housing. And then a whole other business unit within the Wyandotte Center is their traditional mental health services, just like Burt Nash has, but they've distinguished that separation within their organization. But here are some of the core functions that you see here amongst property management responsibilities, maintenance of the unit's tenant selection, operation, practice, maintaining fair housing standards, fiscal management, collecting rent, and then coordinating with supportive services. And again, that's where we're going to spend a lot of the time talking about why, how important that coordinated function is. So the lead service provider, that's the other side of the coin, the supportive service provider. So what are the things that traditionally they're tasked with doing? They need to create a service plan. That can look a lot like later in the slide deck that I shared with you all, a housing stabilization plan. Develop a service budget. What are the services that they need? Make sure that they secure the funding for those services, coordinate service delivery. And that could be everything from food, medication drops, getting them to a court appointment, getting them to a physical care appointment, participating in team planning. And we think about team planning, like, who, what is the care team that that individual needs to keep them successfully housed? And many times, that does include the property manager or the rental agent. Participate in tenant screening, so sitting alongside with the tenant as they are going and looking at units, to be an advocate for them and support them through that process, and maybe also answer some questions that the property manager might have about what supports are available to that individual. And those are some of the things that you're going to hear Angie talk about a little later, what that process looks like. And then just promoting the tenant's engagement. And what we mean by that is them taking an active role of, in making sure that they're living up to the standards that are in their lease, or their occupancy agreement. And then again, I highlight here, coordinating with the housing and property staff and the other partners. That coordinating function is core. This slide broke off a little bit in the print version of it, so I apologize. But when we took, when we, I wanted to provide this slide just to, you know, show some of the activities, to give you a sense of what this looks like on a, on a, in practice. So when you think about disruptive behavior, what's the landlord, that a client might be doing? In particular, some of the clients that we're most focused on, that are coming right out of unsheltered homelessness. And more often than not, I'll just give an example of challenges that I know our partners experience, they're coming right out of living in a communal environment, supporting their friends and neighbors. And when they get housed, sometimes their friends and neighbors want to come and get housed too. But that's not, that would mean that they would be violating their lease. That is a huge challenge, and that's really hard on the tenant. So what that often can result in, what neighbors can see is it's disruptive behavior, sometimes it's property damage, sometimes it's disruptive guests. So you can see what the two roles are here of the landlord or the property manager. That's, you know, assessing the impact on the tenant and community first. So how are the neighbors reacting? We have examples of, you know, the neighbors are going to call the police, the neighbors are going to ask for something to be done, and that, that's not good for anybody involved. But what's the supportive service provider doing? You know, they're giving some coaching about, hey, how can we create safe boundaries for you? So, you know, you're articulating that you don't, you can't have folks in. How do we protect you, and what does that look like? These are just some examples of how to address these, the different challenges that come up, and how those distinctive roles come into play. Again, coordination, I can't, you know, it's all focused on making sure that the tenants sustain stable housing. That's what the common goal that we're focused on. And, you know, the different things that we're looking at that are being balanced here. You have what collaboration looks like, it's, you know, making sure that there's a shared vision. The housing stabilization plan, again, that's the document that when, for example, what we're putting into practice with the flexible housing pool is making sure that a housing stabilization plan is crafted from the outset of what are the key ingredients, and who are the folks that are going to be a part of the care team to keep that individual stably housed? And that shared vision is developed with property management, with the supportive service provider, and most importantly, with the tenant. So we've been putting those together and as a practice. And a lot, in a lot of ways, you know, tenants to homeowners has led the call for that because they know that that's what they need for folks to be successfully housed in their units, and to have that shared vision and communication, and to have a document that we can always go back to and say, okay, here's what we agreed to, everybody. So I mentioned that that's an example. We think about the different roles, and understanding those institutional biases are really complex sometimes. It's one thing when you're talking about working with a mission-driven landlord like tenants to homeowners, but when you're working with a different, with a private landlord in the community, they're going to show up with some experiences that are going to be hard to navigate at times, and need some coaching around. So, again, just some more opportunities, illustrations of coordination, educating and supporting the tenants, making sure that we're getting tenant input, focused on keeping them stably housed, ensuring that the quality of the physical unit is maintained, and it, making sure that you're, they're putting eyes on the unit to make sure that they're, you know, maintaining it up to their obligations, but also, you know, helping the tenant advocate when the unit isn't up to the standard, up to standards and a repair is needed, that the landlord does need to make. And then tracking the outcomes and the, in terms of like maintaining housing and recovery supports, and how to improve the overall quality of, of living for that individual. When we look at, you know, trying, when an eviction is on the horizon, you know, the activities are of the supportive provider, you know, they're working with the landlord to try to prevent that. And worst-case scenario, you know, they're going to be working with the tenant to move to another unit and finding, finding another unit for them to be located in. And you can, at times, look at, you know, for the role of the housing or the rental manager, they're working on maintaining that relationship and with the different providers, and trying to support and communicate what's happening with the client in real time. I'm not going to walk through all this, but this gives you an example of how to, how to, at all, at all costs, try to prevent an eviction process, and the different roles of the tenant, the supportive provider, or case manager, in some cases, and the property manager, and how that collaboration and process looks. And then I gave some examples of, you know, what does it look like when, are some components here of what a housing support plan looks like? You know, really empowering the tenant, you know, what steps can you take to make sure that you're an active participant in maintaining your housing? Having some dates, having some goals, identifying who's responsible for what in terms of, you know, who do you call when you're having a challenge? And just like, making sure that the care teams and the staff that are assigned to support individuals are accountable and understand what their, their role in the plan is. Just some components here of what the sections of a housing support plan can look like. Here's one of the things that, you know, when you think about a landlord, like tenants to homeowners, Housing Authority, Cardinal, Ninth Street, you know, when an individual is not able to pay their rent, it's not, or if there's a challenge related to, you know, some of that disruptive behavior, or other activities, you know, just working really patiently with the, with the tenant to make sure that, and the service provider to come up with a, with a plan to address those issues, and to get folks, if needed, connected to treatment and other interventions. These are just some different examples of, you know, what's happening when tenants are not able to pay their rent, and how do you navigate that in a trauma-informed way? You know, there's other things that are, there's, there are different components in terms of like the financial reasons that an individual can't pay, and there's different reasons why perhaps an individual may not want to pay when we're talking about folks that are, again, they're, they haven't, have a history of traumatic, of traumatic lifestyle, traumatic, of homelessness, traumatic brain injury. That's a common thread in a lot of the folks that we're seeing that are, we're trying to house right now. We talked a little bit about the, just having folks in and out of units, having visitors. This, this was a common concern that has to be navigated, and that, you know, communication between the property manager and the care provider is a necessity, and manage, making sure that folks are not, that shouldn't be in the unit are there, are not there, as well disturbing the peace, addressing those behaviors in the moment, but also trying to figure out, you know, when it comes to things like disturbing the peace, you know, how much of that is related to the individual and the challenges that they're experiencing, and approaching that in a trauma-informed way? And then, you know, thinking about it in terms of the fair housing considerations based on the individual's disabilities and challenges that they're experiencing. Okay, I think that's my last slide. Okay, my timing's good. Okay, so I want to call on some of our partners to talk about some of the components that I've touched on, but give you some really, like, real examples of how this is playing now in the community right now. And then we want to make sure we have plenty of time to have questions and discussion. So I want Angie Bauer to talk first about, you know, what does that communication and coordination look like on a routine basis as it relates to those housing support plans? And why the, why that tool's important, and why the, what those coordinating activities look like specifically for Angie? And this, I want to start with Angie because one of the big questions that you all had that I want to make sure what we revisit and hopefully resolve is the, the, a request for supplemental support for tenants to homeowners was specifically related to the coordinated roles that Angie's going to talk about, and the work that she's doing, and how the need for that, there's a need to expand that to an additional position that is attached in your packet. So Angie, you want to talk about some of those things?
Thank you. Tenants, the homeowner supports about 73 units of supportive housing, and those range from transitional housing for youth to transitional housing for families experiencing domestic violence, to some communal living, for people who struggle with substance use disorder and SPMI, as well as individual kind of family units within the community. Many of the people that we serve have pretty complex needs and a lot of barriers to being able to maintain housing and prevent eviction. So some of the things on a daily basis that I have to deal with is the coordination of support services within the community to make sure that the needs of the individuals are being met. Many people that I house, what I see is a lack of just those daily living skills that we all take for granted, knowing how to wash your dishes, or take your trash out, or do your laundry, or shop for a budgeted meal. So one of the pieces that I helped put together was this individualized housing stabilization plan, with the hopes that bringing together all the support providers in the community that we partner with that provide case management or services like on the TBI waiver, or peer support through Heartland Rad Act, bringing those key components together so we can talk about needs and services. You know, what are the current needs of the individual, and what are the services that they're engaging in currently, and what are the lapses in services that there might be? And how do we pull together community partners to fill in those gaps? So as I meet with service providers, we, it's an opportunity to talk openly about what the challenges are of these individuals that we're trying to house and keep stably housed. And it's also an accountability, and accountability for the service provider, accountability for tenants to homeowners, and also accountability for the person served, because ultimately, they're the most important. If they're not engaged and don't buy into it, then we know it doesn't work. So bringing those partnerships together in a way that needs are being met in a way that's trauma-informed, and it's individualized, where things aren't being forced upon people, but we're walking alongside with them as they're, you know, looking to get into housing and hopefully change some of the patterns that have kept them unhoused for so long. So building this plan of accountability and a system of support for those individuals is high priority for tenants to homeowners. We take no joy in housing people just to have to turn around and unhouse them. That defeats the whole purpose of why we're here. We're mission-based, and our mission is to provide the services, the housing services in the community so we can house as many people as possible. It's not without struggles, but, you know, we're also tend to be the first line of defense when something goes wrong, when things are going awry on a Friday night at 6 o'clock, you know, we're getting the phone call, that the police are being called, or there's a disruption in the unit, or someone's in crisis. You know, I've had to leave my family at 8 o'clock at night and call a mobile response team and wait as those services are brought in to a unit to be able to assess someone for needed services. It takes a little bit more effort than it just a generalized rental manager. It takes probably twice as much time to keep someone housed on a weekly basis or a daily basis sometimes. So it's important that, you know, the supports that are there are available when it's necessary. So we create this housing stabilization plan, and then we meet with the client, and we go over the, the plan. A big part of that plan is also what is the crisis plan? What does happen at, you know, weekend hours or after hours? And that way, the person that we're serving knows what's to expect, you know, it's not being done to them, it's being done with them. And what I've found is people are really receptive when we all come to the table and we do it with them. And, and it, it holds agencies accountable, it holds the client accountable. And, you know, the hope is that it creates some long-term success for people that can be very difficult to manage sometimes. So the housing stabilization plan is a key component, I feel, in keeping everybody on the same page, and it offers a roadmap to support and success.
Thanks, Angie. One thing, in the revised budget request that was in your packet, you know, something that Rebecca and I really honed in on was, you know, that is now a supportive housing rental management specialist. That's the title of that service, that position that's being requested. Those are the activities. That, that is our appropriate title for that request, so I want to make sure I flag that there's some updates that are in there, and the naming of the position and the work, that they're rental management services. Those are the activities. It's not case management. There's a lot of coordination that's going on there, but care coordinator was kind of a misnomer, if you will, but I wanted to flag that.
Angie, thank you. You mentioned that you serve a large population of youth?
We have a youth transitional housing, and in one home, we serve four, and the other home, we serve three communally.
So seven?
Seven total.
Okay. The population that you serve is, is the majority of them uninsured?
Some are exiting foster care, so they have insurance till they're 26, but the majority of the youth that we're serving currently don't have insurance.
Do you partner with healthcare providers when it comes to different types of assessments? I'm thinking of EPSDT?
We do, we utilize Burt and Nash a lot. We do, we utilize Burt and Nash a lot. We also utilize Heartland. And I know that the case manager on site has worked with some agencies as far as therapy, getting sliding scale fees and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
So kind of sticking with the role of the property management side, I wanted to have Hannah talk a little bit about, you know, kind of in the early days of Cardinal Housing, and, you know, what does this work look like in terms of the partners that she's working with, Family Promise and Reentry being chief among them? And what's being learned in the early days about the level of support that some of the folks are needing and kind of highlighting again the role of coordination and care from her perspective?
Thank you, Jo. I just passed out a very large document, but I thought this would be important to share with you all, as this is kind of our program guidelines. It also has all of our intake forms that kind of talk more about our relapse plans. So if you are inclined, you can read that before bed one night, which you write to sleep. I went ahead and prepared a statement, so go ahead and get started. Good afternoon, thank you for having me. I will preface that I am not an expert in this work, but I come to you all deeply committed to building a network of supportive housing opportunities to women here in Douglas County through the work of Cardinal Housing Network. While many of you may be familiar with my story, I got into this work after losing my brother Sam to an alcohol addiction in 2021. The best program we found for him was 90 Days in Nature, where transitional housing played a key role in the final 30 days. It allowed what he had learned in treatment, both inpatient and intensive outpatient, to be applied to his everyday life in a controlled, community-centric environment. His passing provided me with clarity that housing is an essential component in recovery, and the continuum of care programs like ours are a necessary component to the recovery ecosystem. To put the need into perspective, women seeking sober living homes in Douglas County have access to less than half of the beds available to men, and Douglas County has roughly a fourth of the beds available to women and single female-headed households compared to Shawnee, Sedgwick, and Johnson Counties. There are only 15 beds available to women and children. Before diving into our supportive housing practices, I've supplied you all with our house manual, resident agreements and acknowledgements, and intake forms for you to review. In those documents, we have attempted to craft a trauma-informed approach to supportive housing, including relapse prevention plans. Is this cutting out for anyone else or just me? Okay. Is it too close? Okay, perfect. It's in my mouth. Okay, we have attempted to craft a trauma-informed approach to supportive housing, including a relapse prevention plan, in ways we as the property manager can reduce recidivism in our justice and healthcare systems through eviction prevention measures. These documents were crafted using benchmark policies from peer organizations like Douglas County-based Artists Helping the Homeless and Hearthstone, and Kansas City, Missouri-based organizations like Amethyst Place and Healing House. We have looked to successful programs to develop something that promotes a holistic approach to recovery, and actively seek guidance from these organizations as we continue to refine our program. The policies presented are exclusive to the group home located at 1046 New Hampshire Street. We will be developing family-centric policies alongside Family Promise and Douglas County Reentry Program that will be applied to the seven apartments on Ohio Street in the coming months. I was fortunate enough to attend the four-day CHS training in spring of 2024 to learn more about best practice arrangements between property manage and service providers. We utilized that workshop, as well as the assessment of our organization's strengths and weaknesses, to develop the requirement of an ongoing case management tied to any referral. This in part was to reduce the need to duplicate services in our community, but also to utilize the expertise and leverage resources of our community partners. In an effort to not reinvent the wheel, we replicated the system Artists Helping the Homeless utilized upon coming to Douglas County in 2019, and made the decision to launch the program with Douglas County Sheriff's Office Reentry and/or justice-involved individuals for our first months of operation at our introductory home. The reentry team has a long, successful history of reintegration and a very hands-on approach to case management, meeting with our residents at a minimum of one time a week, and navigating the complexities of document acquisition and enrollment in government services. This partnership has allowed Cardinal the opportunity to streamline case management with a single entity, ensuring we know what services will be provided and when, and how Cardinal fills the gaps, in day-to-day support like transportation and accountability. Additionally, we hold case conferences every Monday morning to review the tasks of the coming week, address any behavioral concerns, assess policies, and review potential referrals. Our partnership with Family Promise will be similar in nature as we move into providing services for families. A case management plan is developed before admission at Cardinal, and I think it is important to note that current Cardinal Housing residents are utilizing the entire spectrum of Douglas County-based resources. They are enrolling in IOP services at DECA and MIR, MAT services at both Heartland Community Health Center and Haskell, peer recovery coaching with Heartland Radac, mental health services with Burt Nash, and the list continues. We have individuals participating in Drug Court and actively meeting probation requirements. To keep residents moving forward in their reintegration, our role at Cardinal is to ensure they meet the obligations put forth by their case management and provide the supplemental support of day-to-day needs. Our CHN staff, support coordinator, who's here?
Hope. Is a peer, and offices at the house 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Monday through Friday. Our support coordinator assists in medication management and safety protocols associated with prescribed medications, transportation, developing weekly schedules, providing community accountability, and provides a physical presence to address immediate concerns. We also have a peer live-in house manager that supports the house evenings and weekends. We also provide opportunities for community building. We recently went to the Topeka Zoo, have hosted cooking classes at a tie-dye shirt party last Friday, and regularly go to the movies. The women residing in the house choose the activities and are tasked with picking dates, researching event dates and times and costs, and ultimately taking ownership of the activities. We have found this to be a really crucial part of building community. Lastly, Cardinal also acts as the property manager, addressing repairs in a timely manner, usually when the women are out of the house at either treatment or job requirements, and ensuring the house is secure. Our current resident pool has varied backgrounds that include housing insecurity and homelessness, domestic violence, and incarceration, primarily attributed to their substance use disorder. The residents that have come to us thus far do not have financial autonomy to pay rent or acquire basic necessities upon move-in. Cardinal is able to take indigent residents through the sponsorship of four beds from the reentry office. This supports the first 30 days of the program, allowing the women the time to address health appointments, documentation acquisition, and pending court obligations. This allows residents to not have to immediately obtain employment and focus on establishing their recovery plan. We do not require a deposit fee either. Cardinal makes sure residents' basic needs are met upon move-in, providing all toiletries, food, bedding, and ADA accommodations. One second. I'll conclude by noting three wins that we've had in the past few months. We had an incident where residents were frustrated with a few house policies, particularly a few restrictions placed on new residents entering the probationary period. Instead of rejecting their concerns, we held a whole-house meeting, including Cardinal staff and the reentry team, to talk through the concerns. We asked for their feedback, wrote up a new proposed document that addressed their concerns within a week's time, presented them back to the women for their feedback, and ultimately came to a unanimous agreement to adopt the changes they had recommended. This type of approach was extremely successful in building trust and buy-in. Second one is, we had a resident who was experiencing a really rough day. She sent a note to the house expressing fear and disappointment. She was off-site at the time and proceeded to be flooded with messages of support and understanding from her fellow residents. Another resident had an Uber gift card that was given to her by the reentry team, and she called her a ride to return back to the house. The next morning, the resident experiencing distress was ready to address the problem head-on and began working towards that goal immediately. All that is to say that while we are a housing provider, we are also committed to building a community that supports one another. It was really special to see that in action. The last thing I wanted to note is that we had a resident who was concerned about outstanding court fines. Shelby Osborne with Reentry coordinated with the court system, her probation officer, and the Social Service League to set up an arrangement for the resident to utilize community service as a way to pay her fines, prioritizing positive forward movement in her recovery with a shared community benefit instead of placing more barriers in her way. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. I want to have Shelby almost wrap us up. Kristin's going to really wrap us up, but Shelby, if you talk, you know, Hannah's talked about the relationship, everything that I know is, the relationship between Reentry is pretty foundational with Cardinal right now. So I think, you know, Hannah, you mentioned the role that they're playing right now, but I think it's illustrative of the role that Reentry plays with a lot of folks in the community. Reentry stays with people for a good amount of time. That's not necessarily how we want it to always be, but that's how it plays out, because it is hard to keep folks stably supported in the community. And Reentry doesn't want folks to come back into custody. So what we see is Reentry services staying with folks a long time, because there is a shortage, there's a shortage of the level of supports that a lot of folks need. The level of acuity that Hannah is seeing right now at Cardinal, the folks that need Cardinal, and folks in the community that Reentry's worked with, they need to stick with them longer. And so Shelby, if you just talk about, like, what has Reentry seen, and why do you stick with folks longer, and what does that look like?
Sorry. So Reentry initially started with, like, our foundation being in the jail, transitioning from in custody to the community. And even the duration that I have been with the sheriff's office, our case management style has changed to where we are staying with them longer in the community, whether that's through, like, the housing voucher, or just even connecting them to, like, Artists Helping the Homeless, or specialty courts, through, like, BHC and Drug Court. We found that having that long-term case management as they're continuing to work with all the other service providers helps them to kind of work through additional barriers that continue to come up as their duration of living in the community continues. So like, one of the things that we focus at Cardinal House is, when they initially go there from custody, that first 30 days of, like, just getting your basic needs met, like medical appointments, documents that they need for IDs, before we're addressing other long-term things. Once they're stable and they're able to, like, get in their routine of going to IOP and engaging with the community relationships, we transition to, like, addressing more of the risk and the needs that they need to continue to be successful.
Thanks, Shelby. So Kristin sits in, Egan, our Housing and Human Services Program Manager, sits in a unique space here, in that, if you recall, Kristin was previously the regional coordinator for the Douglas County region for our continuum of care. So she was coordinating referrals for housing for folks that were experiencing homelessness. Now she's in a position where she's maintaining, she's helping support our new flexible housing pool. She's working with folks that are trying to access rent and utility assistance, and she still is being, you know, coordinating care with our current regional homeless coordinator, trying to understand, how do we get folks housed, and how do we navigate the barriers to get them housed and keep them housed? And Kristin gets kind of pulled into the nexus of that more often than not, and I wanted her to just kind of bring home why this is important and how we're trying to navigate things moving forward.
Stel, thanks for having me. I really, to keep it simple, housing folks that have been chronically homeless and unsheltered homeless is just a really big task, and it takes more support than we want it to, maybe, takes longer than we want it to. And we have a lot of really great supports in this county. It's something to be very proud of. If we can all coordinate together and wrap around folks, that will be much more successful, and it will also be more efficient. If you're not coordinating among agencies, no one agency can solve somebody's homelessness with them. It's going to take several agencies. And unless those agencies are collaborating effectively, there's duplication of services, there's a lack of accountability, and things are dropped, and lots of things come up. Things come up before they're housed, when they're first housed, and as they get used to housing. Those needs are always shifting, and it's really important for all the different supports that are needed to trust each other, to work together, to communicate, and to hold each other accountable. And when we do that, all these great agencies and services that we have will start to lead to better outcomes. But working on clients, when we're all siloed and trying to solve it on our own, the case managers get frustrated, they're overcapacity. If we work together, that really improves, increases the capacity, because they're not trying to solve it all on their own, without talking to each other and determining whose job is what, and who's taking something on. So it's just super helpful to have a collaboration. Otherwise, the agencies are all doing good work, but it's, the outcomes are not as good as they could be if we were collaborating.
Thank you for that. So how are you all tracking the various services and ensuring that they're not being duplicated?
So I think that would be probably a little different, maybe, for Hannah, for Cardinal and Reentry. With tenants to homeowners and the different players that are involved in flex vouchers, we're starting to have coordination meetings, team meetings with all of the folks that are involved. So that's likely going to be, I mean, every support team is different, right? Like, every client is different and has different needs, but, for example, you could have a meeting with Minds Matter, Heartland Radac, Burt Nash, MIR, HRT, all of these folks coming together and then using that housing stabilization plan that Angie really developed, so that we have whose role is what, who's in charge of what, holding each other accountable, including the client, so that we're all on the same page, and holding each other accountable, and also supporting each other. The case managers have had really great feedback as we started to do this. I can tell they're, like, almost chomping at the bit to collaborate with each other, because sometimes they do feel alone, and that's really, really overwhelming.
Yeah, I think we use the housing stabilization plan as a tool to document that. On a weekly basis, in the coordinated entry system meetings, our new, our regional, new-ish regional coordinator that took Kristin's position, she talks, we talk openly about who's working with so-and-so to make sure that we have that documented as well. But I would say that duplication of service, I don't think is a challenge. If anything, the population of folks that we are focused on with A Place for Everyone, our priority population is that chronic homeless. What we know about the chronic homeless population and the folks that are being referred right now for supportive housing, whether it's at Cardinal or the Flex Pool, or Sunrise House, or Artists Helping the Homeless, is they have very, they're very high acuity. And we've come to a shared agreement with one of our best practice work groups that these folks need to have access to five days of supports. Two days on the weekends if they need them, and that could look like peer support at times in crisis, that could be, you know, calling mobile response, but five days of support. So what does that five days of support look like in that housing stabilization plan? Ideally, the lead provider, the lead supportive housing provider, we talked a lot about, Reentry is that lead housing provider. Sometimes it's Burt Nash. We need to have the provider committed to being able to visit with that person at least once, maybe twice a week, to try to, again, get ahead of the weekend and not have any challenges. But it could also be our colleagues at Heartland Community Health or the Public Health Department are saying with their community health worker teams, hey, we want to be involved, because they're already engaging with those folks around their physical health needs, so they're around the table. We have peers from Heartland Radac, we have Heartland Radac intensive recovery coaches and care coordinators that are also at the table. We're all coordinating around what the client needs, and I really think that it's more just getting everyone organized and using the housing stabilization plan to document it, and making sure that those agencies have the capacity to support the folks that have those high acuities.
I think it's a lot about gaps, less about duplication, and, I mean, trying to find an agency that can, how do you cover five days a week? Like, that's not easy.
But it's not 24/7 care.
Right, but even a check-in, like, five, I mean, daily, it's intensive, and it's not something that this community was used to providing.
I think that was going to be my next question, but first I wanted to say thank you for developing the plan that everyone
But first I wanted to say thank you for developing the plan that everyone's using, right? Because that's super helpful because oftentimes that is one of the biggest gaps is the fact that you need a plan that everyone can actually use and a plan that everyone wants to adopt. And my next question was going to be, have you all identified gaps that you do need to solve for? And if you have, what are those gaps?
I think one of the great things with developing a plan is that I think there were gaps before because people weren't communicating. And I think now that the communication has increased, that what gaps there were, there's always someone who says, well, what about this agency or what about that agency? And so there might've been gaps that a case manager didn't know about, but by developing this team atmosphere of wraparound services, the gaps to me are becoming less and less because the open communication that's happening, it no longer, the onus is on one agency to provide it all. It's divided amongst many, so.
And just to add to that, I think that the CES meetings, the coordinated entry meetings, which happen weekly, we've kind of started to do a lot of this together. I can't solve somebody's homelessness alone. When we get in a group and there's lots, there's good attendance at that meeting with the direct service providers, it's really a good chance for us to brainstorm together. And have you tried this? Have you tried this? And it's super helpful, no matter who you are, to be in that kind of setting where you're all brainstorming together. And so that's already happening a little bit, but as these, as we get together with the support team and use these plans, it will happen more directly for each client that we, that we take into these programs. So like Angie said, we're already starting that and it does seem like more of a collaborative support team. And I think everyone's really happy to be helping each other out.
I would add too, maybe at a higher like 30,000 foot level, and you guys can correct me because you're way closer to this work than I am, but you know, Hannah's original operational model included clients paying rent. Now, you know, with these, she isn't, with clients that need this intensive level of support, those clients aren't paying rent. So the gap is going to be, how do we support Hannah and the work that Cardinal Housing is doing so that she can continue to do that in the community? Because if she's not getting rent, how does she continue to make those payments? Reentry is extending further and further into the, with the client in the community to provide these services. That, you know, they do, they do it because they have to and they want to, but that wasn't always envisioned. I know they take clients to Medicaid assisted treatment programs because no one else will. They don't have transportation. So I think there are some of those kinds of gaps that is just outside of traditional, I went to therapy this week, or I went to see my probation officer and then everything in between. Maybe that's something.
Yeah, I want to, Sheriff's Office has made a substantial investment from their operating budget to make sure that, that folks that are staying at Cardinal Housing, and it really has illustrated how important it is to revisit the assumptions that were made around Cardinal House and the inequities that that, Sarah nailed it, you know, like those inequities that have existed before as it relates to services available to women. We've had artists helping the homeless services available for five years now in Douglas County and we have not had comparable services available to women. And the label, the level of support the artists helping the homeless is able to wrap around folks in that environment is substantial and is able to meet folks with that high acuity. We're seeing now that even though Hannah didn't necessarily want to assume that that was what people would need, that is what we're seeing. And we're seeing that in other parts of the community as well.
I would say like also like our partnerships with other people that were merging. So for example, the individual at Cardinal today that I provided transport to a medicated appointment, we talked with the provider about medicine, arranging how that individual could have easier access to her medication and then provided her another ride to DECA to go meet with her provider there. But we spent a good portion of our morning with her and those are the services that they're learning to navigate on their own that you can't, we can't expect them to do something that they've never done before. Whereas like losing her job was a stressful factor to her, but she knows that she has to pay rent coming up. So one of the things we're working on is like a budget and being able to prioritize those things for her. But like those are things that she's never had to experience and it's a lot of weight initially.
So when you think about those partnerships, are there any partners that are currently not at the table that you, that you wish would actually be at the table because they would be a really good partner in this work?
I think the list is always continuously growing. I think, you know, when I initially started, agencies were really siloed in their own departments and just doing their own thing. And I think as we all come together with different expertise about different services, then that just grows and expands. So a prime example of that is the IDDD community. I bring with me 25 years of working in that community and knowing a lot about those services. And when I first started, people didn't necessarily know that, you know, those services could be initiated and crisis funding could be applied for. But through the sharing of information and knowledge, I think that, you know, that base level knowledge is increasing and, and I think when you know better, you do better.
And I don't want to tap dance around. I think there's an example that we've talked to the commission before specifically, I mentioned about, I mentioned the high acuity of folks. So when we think of high acuity, we've talked to the commission before about questions around the ACT program. That is a program that we, while it's not, it's not a magic wand for a lot of folks, but it is a program that when we think about folks that have a high acuity, Angie's had a lot of experience working with that program. And I think, you know, we've talked about that with the commission, that we've had challenges with that. And I think that's just one example of how we're trying to work through and navigate what is the level of support that folks need and what does that look like when they are housed in the community when we do not have access to 24/7 institutional care that some folks may need, but also a lot of folks were trying to find a solution for them in the community and that's what the community has compelled us to do. And candidly, as our, as our colleagues with the City of Lawrence and the Homeless Response Team are trying to get as many folks out of the camps, the final folks that are being, are the hardest to get housed are some of the folks with the highest needs. And it's challenging to navigate all the ways that we can show up to support those individuals, but that's the commitment that we're trying to make with our colleagues at the City of Lawrence and also the city and the Lawrence Community Shelter who are also challenged in supporting folks with these high acuity needs.
ACT stands for Assertive Community Treatment. Or Assisted Community Treatment.
You all have done a really nice job of highlighting the need and I appreciate that. As I think back on our budget hearing, my questions are, I think the need is always going to be higher than we are going to have the resources to address. I think what my questions are, are about how the system is working that you all are involved in. One of the things I heard was best practice is that property management is separate from supportive services. That's best practice. I also heard Jill say that in other cases it can work. Angie, I'm going to ask you because you're with an organization that is both property management and supportive services. I see someone in the audience shaking their head. So if I'm misunderstanding that, I need to understand that because I think that's what, that's what I came away from our budget hearing understanding and it now sounds like Jill has a different proposal. So in our role as trying to understand how to fund the system, I'm trying to get a better understanding of how the system is working together. I did hear today some discussions about how it's evolving, we're figuring out how to work together, but we, let me ask my question before I start going off on a tangent, but so tell me why we think that best practice is important? And if we're not following that best practice, why are we not following that best practice?
The request didn't change though. I think we were not talking about it in clear enough terms. Their rental management activities, those rental management activities with a mission-focused not-for-profit like tenants to homeowners or Cardinal, it looks different. When somebody doesn't pay their rent or they're, they're, they're having challenges with their neighbors, it looks different than a private landlord. And I think those are the activities that it does blur the lines at times in terms of that level of coordination that Angie gets engaged in, but it, it's not supportive services. But I'll let Angie talk.
I think what we do is provide trauma-informed property management that collaborates with community support providers to provide the supportive services. You know, a key component in what I do is, is the communication between, you know, my agency and the supportive services. Again, we're typically the first people who get called when there's a problem and it's always after hours, it's always on the weekend. So it becomes my job and responsibility then to contact the players that are responsible for providing those support services, whether it be, you know, a crisis mobile response, whether it be the ACT case manager, whomever it is on that person's team to let them know there's a problem. So in, in saying that, I'm not providing the support services, but I am communicating with the support services so they know what's happening because we are the first people to get called or the city's calling us because there's a problem. So for me, it's that collaboration piece that's the key component, collaborating and communicating.
Chime in. We are trying, Cardinal really trying to build a peer-based model where there's someone in the property or near, near these individuals on a daily basis that can provide all of the, you know, as Shelby had mentioned, the transportation is one of the biggest gaps, if I'm being candid. There are not a lot of organizations that provide any transportation. That makes it really difficult for individuals to get where they need to go, to get the services that they need that are set out in their case plan. What Hope does at, and I'll say this quite candidly, this operation would not be functional without Hope's service. Hope provides, quite literally, she is able to execute the service plan that is put together from the case manager that is Shelby. And that relieved Shelby to provide more case management for other individuals and then we can help execute it to get the folks where they need to go to provide that level of support that they need. Again, we are working with a lot of individuals who have never been, you know, haven't been housed in years. And so what does that look like as we are navigating the first 30, 60, 90 days? Those services might not be as applicable once we get to a point where they're really stable and they're recovery, they're looking for additional housing opportunities. But the folks that we're serving, it's a matter of the coordination piece, getting them where they need to go, keeping them on task, working with them to identify, you know, oh, I've got a court date coming up or their requirements that, and that's something Shelby would identify, but then we can make sure that it gets done. So that's kind of where our, you know, maybe you need to change the title now that we've talked about this, but you know, we use that support coordinator to execute the plan. So not develop it.
And I just wanted to add to what Angie was saying about trauma-informed property management is so important, like if these folks, like, like we've all been saying, it's the transition from unsheltered homelessness to housing. It's, it's so hard for people to adjust to that and there are going to be hiccups. The client or the tenant is going to make a mistake or violate the lease, they just are. And having a property manager that understands the reason behind that and is willing to say, I get why that's happening and understand that there's a support team that will help the tenant correct that behavior and understand their responsibilities. It's, we're so lucky to have it because generally landlords, you know, private landlords are a little bit easier to talk to and say, hey, this is what's going on, they can understand. But if you're talking about a corporation, it's just lease violation gone. So the trauma-informed piece is just super, super important when you're dealing with people that are adjusting to a completely different way of living than what they're used to.
I don't know that I quite have a question, but maybe a request for some future information and comments. I think part of what I'm thinking about in hearing about sort of the evolution of more collaborative meetings happening, more intensive training opportunities for all sort of available partners that are working in this space in their different roles and trying to build more continuity, which I'm a big proponent for, recognizing that every agency is going to have their own mission and that there, even within that organization, there may be a spectrum of housing options available with different types of agreements related to that. And I think we've heard some of that illustrated today. I'm really interested in this idea of what does it look like to have continuity in both screening processes as well as the actual language around leases and occupancy agreements for anything that is considered supportive housing? So how different do those leases look right now? Do we have any sort of shared trauma-informed language? Hannah, I really appreciate you bringing this and sharing transparently like what every person who moves into Cardinal Housing Network is presented with and it's, you know, it's not exactly a lease per se, but in many ways functions similarly in that there are rules and agreements. And so I appreciate you sharing that with us and I'm interested to see other examples of that and whether or not this group of providers in both circles and where they overlap in the Venn diagram are thinking and talking about what does continuity and language around that look like? And how are we all thinking and talking to prospective tenants and eventual tenants about what those expectations are? What does it mean for your landlord to be privy to information that they might otherwise feel really nervous about sharing because that has led directly to eviction for them in the past, right? Or other problems? So I'm interested in understanding more, how are we talking about that with people when we are bringing them into programming and bringing them into housing and having them make these agreements and sign these leases? And so my assumption is that it looks a little bit different or a lot bit different depending on, even within tenants to homeowners, I'm going to get a guess that you all have different versions of lease agreements based on the different types of rental housing and whether it's transitional or communal, independent. You have some things that are maybe occupancy agreements and not traditional lease agreements. You know, there's a variety of those things and I, I'm interested in understanding that better and seeing like templates and examples of that. And, because I think that can go a long way towards getting providers and, and property managers on the same page about what are those expectations and not all having different ideas about that. I think that could go a long way. So that's a suggestion I have for folks in this room to think through and talk about. And, you know, I've heard a lot of conversation and a lot of mentions of accountability here and that this, you know, team-oriented approach, sort of staffing, regular group meetings, they'd either involve the tenant or that might be about, you know, multiple tenants and units between providers, sort of trying to brainstorm and stuff. I want a better grasp on what do you all mean by accountability? How is that defined? What does it look like for the landlord or property manager to be held accountable? What does it look like for the tenant to be held accountable? And how are we talking about that in these, like, I can generally fill in some blanks and, and probably understand what you all might be, might mean by that, but I'm interested in how does that translate to the conversations you're having to inform people of the expectations that they have of them as a tenant and what revisiting those expectations over time and seeking accountability for them looks like? While also, what does it look like to inform that tenant how? While also, what does it look like to inform that tenant how they can navigate concerns and conversations when they don't believe that their service provider or their property manager is being accountable to things that they agreed to?
That's a lot of questions, Shannon.
It wasn't questions, it was mostly a lot of comments.
I think that's a great idea. So different programs have different requirements, of course, you know that. Some folks are in a unit under a master lease, and I assume, and through Burt Nash's permanent supportive housing, and I assume that there is a contract of some sort that the tenant also signs that outlines their expectation.
We have an occupancy agreement.
Thank you.
They use.
Other folks through the Flex voucher program are going to be on a lease, just like you or I would be. But, but it will be the lead case manager. When we come together as the support group, there will be a lead case manager. That lead case manager is charged with walking, with going with the tenant to, to the landlord and really walking through that lease line by line in a digestible way. And, and using those, if there's something that they're tripped up on, they can really highlight those and make that accessible for the tenant so that they can remember, like, so that's who would be in charge of, like, making sure the tenant understands the program requirements and the lease requirements.
Thank you. No, I, no, yeah, that's great. No, I appreciate the feedback and like, I mean, it was really just sort of a stream of consciousness of all the things that have been ticker-taping in my head for the past hour and just some, I'd be interested to hear some feedback in the future from providers and from this group that's getting to know each other more, working together more, trying to get on the same page about how we think about these issues, identify the gaps and figure out how we might fill those gaps. But I just think sometimes, starting with the paperwork and what are we all agreeing to, is a good place to start.
And I trailed off on the accountability piece. When we have that plan in place in writing and everybody is at the table and agrees to it, what that allows us to do is refer back to that. So if somebody is not holding up their end of the support, then we can say, hey, what's going on here? Are you at capacity? How can we fix this and make you more available to support this client? So, and not just the client, like you said, the landlord and the tenant as well. We can always refer back to that and say, what's going on here? Hold people more accountable, make sure they show up for the client.
We note, we noted in our best practices work group too early on, and I think we have commitment to revisit it, is that if we're, if we're focused on housing folks that have a history of chronic homelessness, the challenge of making sure that they understand how to, how to navigate, how to be good tenants are substantial. So we owe it to them to create some, some opportunities for them to, you know, better understand, like, it's everything from the ADLs that Angie talked about to just, you know, how do you, how do you have good communications with your landlord? What does that look like? Those were one of the things that I think we'll be working on more.
I was going to say, one of the accountability pieces for us as like case managers that we have with our relationship with, I'll say even private landlords, is reentry holds five vouchers through the housing authority. And I have walked through several properties with, like, clients and kind of like getting a feel for what it would look like to sign a lease, being part of that process from the very beginning. I attend the meeting with the landlord, the housing authority, we all sit down, they sign releases, they sign our expectations of being with us for two years on case management. And then as part of that, like, I'm doing regular home visits. The landlord has communication with me and like, lets me know, like, hey, I observed this kind of behavior, can you touch base with them? Or just being in communication of like, hey, I didn't hear from you this week, can we reach out to client together, that sort of thing. And so I would say our relationships is a big portion of our accountability, is like, building that relationship with our partners that we have, and it goes back to like our general case management, right? Back to the basics of what needs are we addressing.
Are you mostly talking with private landlords, local landlords for, for those conversations? Thanks. How do you cultivate new landlords that want to work with supportive services?
You can answer.
No.
So I have one individual that had had an eviction from a particular landlord, and that landlord had worked with the voucher program before, but recognized that the tenant was in a different place this time, had different services, and was working with an agency that could help hold that accountability. And so we went to the landlord and he made amends with the landlord, and the landlord was willing to re, like, rent to him again. And then I just have that relationship with the landlord that if he needs me, he calls me, or if I need something from him and I let him know, anytime I send paperwork to the client, I let him know where the standing is, and then he communicates back with me, like, what rent looks like. And then there's another individual that was on our housing voucher, and he was working with a private landlord who had not worked with the voucher system before. And so we kind of explained to him, like, what reentry would look like. We do home visits, we do walkthroughs to see the property and be able to speak for what's going on. So that landlord was on board with that and willing to work with us. And so now we have called him for other residents that we're looking for.
The distinction was made about corporate landlords. Do you have any corporate landlords that you're working with for the reentry?
Yes, we have one property management company that has been very firm, like, they're willing to do second-trance rentals, and they've met with a client and like, asked him about things that got him where he was. And they showed the property with us, and, and they worked with us, like, again, that partnership, and we worked very closely of like, if there were things going on or if like, maintenance was being called and how we could continue our home visits and stuff like that. Because there was a concern one time when we showed up as law enforcement, they're like, what's going on? And so just making the property management aware of what we're doing there.
Any other questions, commissioners? I know we're a little later than we typically run our work sessions.
My only comment is an hour isn't enough.
Well, thank you all for being here. We appreciate it, and we will adjourn until our 5:30 business meeting.